Holly, are we good? We're set? Oh, yeah. All right. We were working on it even before that meeting. We worked on it all day yesterday. We worked on it all day today, still working on it. Is the, again, we've got lots of cleanup. We've got lots of problems that we're efforting. The one that has the most immediacy for us right now is livestock carcasses. You know, a branch today is going to be a branch in a week. A carcass today is not going to be the same carcass in a week. So, just by the laws of nature, that's our immediate concern. And as I alluded to yesterday, our responsibility as a county is county right-of-way. Whether it be in a township, regardless, if it's a county right-of-way, then we are responsible for dealing with those carcasses in the right-of-way. So, let me talk about our efforts there. We had, obviously, we've got a pretty big county, and we've got a lot of county right-of-ways. So, efforting exactly what we're looking at as far as scope of problem was one of the first orders at hand, and that's ongoing. The southern, the southeast part of the county, our flight has concluded. He's already back here downloading pictures. Got here about a half hour ago. Judging by what they saw when they were up, and then some initial reports from CAP who's flying the north part of a county, I'm going to give you a very, very preliminary estimate that we're probably looking somewhere between 200 and 300 animals on county right-of-way as far as what we need to deal with. So, the other big thing, make sure I refer to my notes so I don't. So, that was our first one, is making sure we had the overflights and the intelligence up. Yesterday, we took a couple of staff, subject matter experts from planning and zoning. We also called over to South Dakota School of Mines and Technology and got some subject matter experts on geology and soils to make sure we could do some site identification that met all of the South Dakota codified law requirements for carcass burial. So, we had great help from the School of Mines. They came over, they poured over maps for hours down in the EOC identifying sites. We found some sites that would meet all of our requirements and were right off a hard pack road that we could access easily. And we narrowed those down to ones that were leased by school and public land so that we could have some type of reasonable avenue for asking permission. I spoke with Commissioner Larson and Deputy Bruner this morning, and they in turn spoke with the leases and talked about adjusting leases to make this work. Bottom line is, the map that you have in front of you there, those two green dots are sections, so 640 acres mile by mile is what those sections are. And those sections are available to us. The leases and the public, school and public land folks have given us permission, and then our experts have validated that the soil conditions and all the other requirements are within the prescriptions set forth by codified law. So, right now, those are our sites. You know, we knew that, and I guess to speak really quick to the rendering side of that, and I don't remember what I said yesterday or what I didn't say yesterday, but the rendering option was valid for intact carcasses. And obviously, moving into this stage, intact carcasses are harder and harder and harder to come by, and if they're moving, if we take a bobcat or whatever and try to move a carcass and it opens, then the render is not interested in it. So, we didn't waste a whole lot of time, energy, and effort planning for that eventuality simply because we pretty much reached the conclusion that that window had effectively closed for us as far as rendering. So, burial is what we went with. We lined up a heavy equipment contractor that has side dumps, loaders, and excavators, and he's working right now with our folks, our planning folks downstairs where we're at. And the other piece of this, just to make sure I back up and say all the right things, this has all been done in conjunction with Stock growers Association, the Association, the Animal Industry Board, the state veterinarians' office. We've got input from everybody and run this plan by everybody, and everybody's good with it. We got Tiffany from Extension. Obviously, one of the big parts of this is the documentation and identification of cattle that we pick up out of the right-of-way. And so, Tiffany Meyer, and she's reaching out to some of her resources as well, will be attached to the pickup crews, and they'll be taking GPS photographs and collecting ear tags from the cattle. Any type of brand identification they can do, but at this state, the brand identification from the brand board is pretty hard. That's the other group we're working with, is the brand board. So, Tiffany Myers is helping us out in the identification piece, going out with the contractors that are picking up cattle, putting them in the side dump. We're documenting all that as we go. I mean, we're moving as fast as we can. The contractor is actually digging our first pit. Earth is moving as we speak on the site for the farthest one out by Quinn. I have a map showing where our closest residents are to those. Obviously, if those pits are there for a couple of days as we work through this process, you know, odor was a concern for us as well. Obviously, we have to get it done, but that was something we looked at, and we've got about a mile buffer between the nearest residences and where we're working with those pits. So, that's where we're at right now. I'm expecting that with our current resources, the contractors that we have, and we're getting, the next big step for us is a, I don't want to say travel management plan, but we need to make sure we hit all the drivable, all the accessible county roads, county right-of-ways to make sure that we do our due diligence in removing the carcasses that we need to remove. And so, we're efforting a plan on a systematic way to make sure that we're doing that with the contractor. So, that's the next big hurdle for us planning-wise, is to come up with that systematic plan for hitting all those roads. But we're at the point where hopefully, before sundown, and this will be a daytime operation, however, we are looking obviously at working through the weekend on it. So, it's not going to shut down Saturday, Sunday, but it'll be a daylight operation. Where was I going with that one? Anyway, we have what we need going, I think, to make the progress that we need to make as a county towards our responsibility of carcasses and the roadway. What was addressed yesterday and what was brought up by Chairman Peterson is what can we do for the private producers? And that's, again, a political decision for you folks to decide. I did speak with FEMA, because one of the concerns, obviously, is always, you know, reimbursement. Not that we're not going to do the right thing, but that's just a question I wanted to effort, and the news I got back was very encouraging. Obviously, the public assistance specialist I was talking to can't make promises and can't sign agreements or documents that ensures it, but they said that our plan for the county sounds absolutely fantastic. They're 100% on board. That sounds like it'll be very easily reimbursable. And the news that I wasn't expecting, because I said, now, what happens when we, if we were allowed, if we put out a press release and invited private producers to, if they wanted to come make use of those pits, what does that do to that reimbursement picture? And surprisingly, the answer was, most likely, that will be covered as well. So, they thought if it worked for us, we were already doing it. We already had the pits. It only makes sense, and the common sense piece of that, surprisingly, I had some encouraging news on that. It's not a promise. I can't guarantee it, but it sounds like it'll be covered as well. And interesting, we just got off the phone, as I was walking up the steps to come here, the contractor who's moving earth as we speak, digging dirt, two private ranchers stopped by and said, can we come dump here? So, there's the interest. I don't know how much interest, and I don't know what numbers, but there's the interest in that, that the county could extend some type of effort to assist. How far that effort goes and what you want us to work on and plan is a decision you folks need to make, but I think at a minimum, it's reasonable to open those pits to allow private producers to bring their cattle to those pits or their livestock to those pits. I think that, at a minimum, is very, very reasonable if that's a direction you want to go. Anything above and beyond that, obviously, is your decision, and I'll do what you tasked me to do. That's about where we're at with the livestock issue. So, tremendous amount of progress, a lot of people working, a lot of hours, and really hard to make that come through. And like I said, from yesterday to now, we're moving dirt, we're digging holes. So, we will start removing those carcasses from the roadway hopefully yet this afternoon. So, we're making progress there. Just as a quick update, and then I'll be happy to stand for questions afterwards, our concern now, it'd be great if we had a month of sunny sunshine, balmy, no precipitation weather on the horizon. We could just kind of march on as-is, but obviously, we are looking at a forecast that may bring some more severe weather to our area. We plan for the worst. We hope for the best, but my job is to plan for the worst. So, I'm looking at 60-plus mile an hour winds and up to an inch and a half of rain on already incredibly saturated soil and debris in the creek. So, the water rescue team, the county water rescue team, so again, let me stress, this isn't just Rapid City Limits. They've been up in a dark canyon, they've been to Thunderhead Falls, they've been down into Green Valley, Rapid Valley. They're working with, they've got three working. They have up to five at their disposal, trackos with thumbs, clearing debris from the edges, in from the edges of where the water is now, and obviously, cleaning out debris that's already accumulated on the bridge abutments. The fire departments, the police office, the sheriff's office have a system in place where first responders are regularly checking those bridges and those bridge abutments, looking for accumulation of debris. We've also put out a press release for the public to let us know if they see accumulations of debris, not only on bridge abutments, but if they're creating temporary dams that are causing backup of water. So, flooding's a very real problem that we're looking at and doing as best we can to mitigate prior to that water hitting us, but we expect Rapid Creek to be pretty close to flood stage, if not well into flood stage, with the amount of rain that's forecasted and the saturation of the soils that we already have. The big issue with the high winds, two big issues with the live, with the high winds. One, we already have a whole lot of branches hanging on by a piece of bark, and so, a lot of those branches are going to come down in high winds. And the hope and the prayer and the information that we're putting out there is everything we can do to keep people out from underneath the trees when it's windy, because the last thing we need to do is drop one of those branches out of the trees onto someone below it. So, huge public press release, trying to get the word out there. We're actually, one of the awesome things, both with the power company and with our joint information center, is we're putting a safety brief, frequently asked questions and a safety brief into the Rapid City area schools take-home packet. All the kids will be bringing that home to their parents, a whole form on what to watch out for. So, the wind in the trees, the branches coming out of the trees, the issue with that wind, the public safety issue is those branches coming down. The one thing that nobody wants to hear, that unfortunately is a reality, is yes, the power companies are working like mad to restore power, and they're restoring more every day, but if we get that wind, if that wind materializes with the way the trees already are damaged and with the way the soil already is, if that wind event materializes the way it's forecasted to, we will have more trees into power lines and we will lose ground on power outages. We will end up with more places without power if that event materializes. It's not a maybe. If we see those winds, we're going to lose power in places. So, the power company's well aware of it. There's not a lot you can do to plan for that other than to let people know, just because you have power now doesn't necessarily mean it's going to stay on through this next event. So, maybe a little more foreshadowing, maybe a little more preparedness, if people can have, you know, put some water aside, put some food aside that they're able to use, basically, a little more preparation in anticipation of the possibility. So, a lot of what we're doing is public education and press releases, trying to get the public to help us out here. The last thing I'll speak to is the fact that it goes right along with that. There's still a lot of downed power lines, and the power company is working very, very hard to reestablish power, and the reality is there are mines on the ground that are becoming energized and arcing on the ground. And so, I said it this morning on the Don Grant Show on KOTR radio, we made it this far without losing anybody. It would be an absolute tragedy if we lost a life in Pennington County due to someone playing, a kid playing around a downed power line, or someone underneath a tree when a branch came out. So, that public safety message is huge. It's not safe out there. There are still hazards everywhere you look, and we're heading into more hazardous weather. Again, high winds, potential flooding, and then looking into next Tuesday at probably another snow event. So, Mother Nature's not vindictive, she's just relentless, and we'll do everything we can to meet those challenges head-on. It's a very fluid, very dynamic environment, but we have the right people and the right responders working their hearts out to make sure we deliver the services we need to to the citizens. Be happy to stand for any questions.
I do have a couple. Dustin, in regards to the pits that we're digging, is, do you have an idea of what the capacity would be? I mean, you're talking large acreages, but I don't know how much of that can be.
We're going to, size-wise, as far as what we're initially digging, we're going to size it to what we know we have to deal with in the right-of-ways. With the plan from the get-go of making sure we can easily expand those pits as needed to accommodate whatever we might get from private producers, if that's the direction the council, or I'm sorry, the commission chooses to go. So, if the commission chooses to allow private folks to bring their livestock there, we are planning on expanding those pits as necessary to accommodate whatever we need to accommodate.
So, that, doing it that way, you can separate the costs of...
They will be individually tracked. Absolutely, they'll be individually tracked. We will know what's in there from the county. We will know what's in there from private producers.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it's a great deal that we would allow private individuals to bring their dead animals to these burial sites. It's no more than the right thing to do. To me, it'd be government at its best to work with the local people and make that happen. And so, I think that we should make a motion to allow those people to bring their animals to those burial sites and use those until such time with a 24-hour notice that the county commission closes those sites. In that way, what's my statement before, I can't make the motion, so I'm just suggesting.
Okay, I'll make that motion. You've stated it, so.
You make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Include Pennington County residents or all of western South Dakota?
Pennington County.
Then I want that in the motion.
Well, it should probably be Pennington County, but what are we going to do if somebody from Meade County brings a truckload in?
Well, you'll never know.
I can speak to that a little bit. You know, again, we can put Pennington County in the notice. It's similar to the drop-off sites in the city. The city drop-off sites were exactly that, city drop-off sites. Is anybody checking IDs or driver's license to see if they're bringing stuff in from Rapid Valley? No. It's, they're collection sites, they're established, and the citizens are bringing the debris, and in this case, the carcasses. Nobody's there, you know, being a residence, I'm not going to use the term, there's nobody there that's checking to see where you're coming from. You open it up to the public, and we'll accept the carcasses, is basically what it comes down to.
The two-pit locations that you've identified, is that going to be it, or are you looking potentially for other sites? And I'm seeing a big empty space between the baseline road and Rapid City.
And there is at least one site in there that we could potentially pursue. The issue is the ownership of the land, what's easy to access, what's on hard pack road, and when, what soils and all the other conditions in South Dakota codified law are as far as burying animals, and we're talking large amounts. We were looking for big pits, and again, they spent hours efforting that, and I've got a map with multiple other sites, but they all have varying degrees of complications to them. These are the, these are the low-hanging fruit, if you will, that meet all of our needs and are the easiest to access, and if we can get it done with this, it will be easier all the way around. If we need to do something different, we will effort that, and those contingency plans are there, but it will be more complicated to access different sites.
The, you know, in terms of the motion that we have, if it were to include authority for you to open another site, should you find a suitable one, I think it would perhaps be wise to do that, or...
Mr. Chair, I don't have a bit of problem with Dustin doing his job, and if he finds other sites in the county, that's his job to open those sites, and I think they could be used for the animals in the right-of-way and also for private use.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker? Karen, can you handle that?
So, let's address your comment of putting Pennington County residents in there.
I don't know. I don't know. Whatever other county's doing, if you heard, Meade County, what are they doing?
We've got, we are ahead of the curve on this one. A lot of people are interested in what we're doing, so we're kind of, I'm not going to say we're going to set a precedent or a standard, but there's a lot of people very interested in what solutions we effort, because everyone's asking questions and no one has any answers. We're farther along with our answer than most people are.
Yeah, I don't care if we...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion...
Mr. Chair, I have one question, I guess, that would fit into this motion. You mentioned the odor and the nearest buildings and residents, and you said one mile. What's your direction from those?
Heading on the wind.
Both east and west.
Sixty mile an hour wind, you can't get far enough away.
Yep. If it blows north or south, we're pretty good for quite a while. If it blows east or west, there's a residence within a mile east and west, but...
Do you have anything you have to do, put lime on it or anything?
That's my next question. Sure, you bet.
We're following all the prescriptions that the state requires, and obviously, they wanted everything buried in 36 hours, which was a whole lot of hours ago. So, you know, at this point, it's get them in the hole, figure out how many people are coming, when they're going to stop coming, when it's reasonable and realistic, which will be a decision for you with the best information and intelligence that I can provide you. So, obviously, we will keep them open until our county obligation is met, and then from there, it will be a decision on how much, you know, what are we seeing? Are the trucks lined up? Are there more coming, or is it time to bury? And I will give you the best information, most up-to-date information I have when that time comes.
Have you heard Lindell at all, how many cattle are maybe out around?
The numbers that I've heard are, my neighbor lost a hundred. He's between Battle Creek and Spring Creek.
There's thousands of them, probably.
And to even speculate on the total number, it would be just, unless you just feel good saying something, but...
And we've talked to some people as part of this process. Obviously, I've got the right people downstairs working on this, and some of the stories are, you know, cattle were going over an edge, and he's down there trying to get, dig out carcasses, and they kept, you know, falling into a, a lot of them are concentrated in ravines where they were trying to get out of the wind and the blowing snow, and basically, they just kept piling up on top of each other. So, this guy has layers of carcasses pressed down into the mud. He says he thinks he's done, and there's another layer. So, we're not going to, we're not, you know, the private producers simply aren't, the honest answer is, there's going to be a lot out there that just doesn't get handled, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, probably not a good thing really to say, but being an ex mortician, I think Ron's suggestion of the lime and things is something to look at.
We certainly will. I'll take that downstairs, and we'll look at...
Depending on what it is and what the state says, but, you know, that's a good way to get rid of them.
Okay. I'll effort that when we get back downstairs.
So, I, excuse me, I have heard, you know, of the ranchers going ahead and just putting their animals in a ravine, and just, they're just going to leave them there. And I don't know if we're having any kind of communication with anybody about suggesting that if you're going to move the carcass, that maybe you want to move it to one of our pits. I don't know what kind of communication is going on out there, if any.
Well, until the motion passes or doesn't pass, there is no way for me to provide that information to the public. So, depending on what comes out of this meeting, we'll drive our joint information center messages almost immediately. Obviously, we're digging the pits now, so depending on what this board decides, that information will be pushed out on every channel and means that we have necessary, that we have available to push out.
Good. That's what I wanted to hear.
I think a lot of people are waiting for answers, so I don't think we're going to have to try very hard to reach people. There's people very eager for some help.
Any other questions, your colleagues?
Could we read the motion again, please, to make sure we got...
[laughing]
Oh, sure, I did that to you, didn't I?
Thank you. Well, roughly, it's a few of the producers to bring dead livestock to the burial sites, and I didn't catch what she said about 24-hour notice.
With a closing notice to 24 hours by the commission.
And then further move to authorize Dustin to open other sites as they are identified.
Okay. Are we comfortable with that? Any further discussion?
That works for you.
Works for me.
If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Just a sidebar. There are many, many locations in western South Dakota and elsewhere where years ago, the government bought cattle, brought them to a site, put them in a trench and shot them because of the economy, and so, this is not the first time, but certainly doesn't make it any better. But, okay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Dustin one other question? Are we able to access some help from National Guard, or is that up?
There's a, I don't know if you heard the soundbite that's going around on the news yet. Governor Dugard specifically spoke to National Guard assets. The National Guard was on state active duty as of, I think, early on Saturday, and we use them for multiple life safety missions. We use them on several different things, including emergency fuel delivery to critical infrastructure, wastewater treatment plants, that kind of thing, to keep things online. So, we have been using the guard. There are some restrictions on the types of missions that they're willing to engage National Guard troops in, and right now, it's strictly some infrastructure-related, as in power line restoration, power restoration, and life safety missions. So, they're very selective on what they engage National Guard assets, what types of missions they engage them in. This carcass removal is a mission that I asked specifically last night if that was an option, and it's not. So, the guards here, they're activated, there's resources available, but it's not carte blanche. There's, there are very specific missions that they're willing to commit those assets to, and so, we ask, we don't not ask, we ask, and if it's deemed appropriate, then they do the mission, and if it's not, then we look for resources elsewhere.
Well, I think we're, I was heading with that, is, we were earlier talking about all the trees and along the right-of-ways and the fact that they can come down. Is there a way that they could maybe do some of that clearing for us?
The answer so far has been no.
Okay.
Now, political will and public demand change. Like I said, it's an incredibly fluid situation, and as days wear on, as different things happen, as different politicians get involved, political will can change, and as the political will changes, the resource availability may change. Just because we get told once doesn't mean we don't go ask again.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me silence my phone. So, the answer is the guards activated, the guards available, we're using them for everything we can use them for. We're somewhat limited in which missions they're being allowed to participate in. Doesn't mean we don't stop asking.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, looking at the agenda, item two was a declaration of existing public health and safety. Is, Holly, is there some kind of a thing we need to adopt in that regard?
I was getting yesterday that we needed to adopt or declare this emergency on the public health and safety threat, but now that information's changed a little bit, that it's more environmental...
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, and the issue, again, when it comes back to, we're doing the right thing regardless, we're not holding up, obviously. You know, we were full steam ahead and did a lot. The question was, if it's picking up a branch... The question was, if it's picking up a branch, at this point, it's not an emergency. Depends on who you ask, it's all in the eye of the beholder. But as far as FEMA goes and reimbursement goes, it's not an emergency. So we have to go through a competitive bid process, abbreviated, but yet there still needs to be that process in place. If it's a life safety issue, it's understood that, you know, you don't have the time to mess around with that, you have to get something done. So the question with these carcasses and the time sensitivity of this situation was, you know, we need to make sure that we have something in our hip pocket in the FEMA documentation that says this was a, a time-sensitive public health type threat that allows us to get done what we need to get done. And so it's kind of funny, a lot of the things that we've been efforting in Pennington County, I make the call to the state and the answer I get back is, we're doing that exact thing. So I called the state and said, this is what we need. And the answer I got back was Department of Health and D E N R and, you know, a couple other organizations, O E M are meeting right now, developing that letter. So what we were asking for was, was already identified and already being worked on. So that letter that says exactly that, it's what the state's using, obviously, for their roadway, for their, for the state right of ways. So, so the letter that says what we needed to say in terms of this being more of an environmental contamination, but certainly there is some public health overtones, but the concentration is actually on an environmental contamination threat. That letter is being, is, my understanding is it's in, it is in its final stages of being vetted through the appropriate departments at peer, and then it will be disseminated to all the counties to be able to be used. So we should have that in our hip pocket here pretty soon. And it's, it's more of a formality and a paperwork thing that, that we can use later on when we're recouping costs.
Given what you see and know, and Jamie weigh in on this too, is that something we potentially could adopt next Tuesday?
And I don't, I, I'll visit with Jay. I'm not. I'm not sure if it's something that requires adoption as more of a, these agencies are going to have a blanket letter that says it is a concern. So I'm not sure what type of commission action would be necessary, if any. But when that letter comes out, I can get it to Jay and he can make a determination maybe on what needs to happen.
I would assume, I guess, to some extent, there will be, have to be a mention to some emergency in order to bypass or avoid general bid laws. And that's something that we can.
That's been done.
Yeah. But one of the questions I had, maybe it's really for Dustin here, is understand that debris removal, primarily trees, branches and whatnot, is not an emergency, except, and I don't know, Heine's not here, are there branches or trees in the right of way that would present a danger to a traveling vehicle or the public which could be considered an emergency?
You know, we, we get into a lot of gray areas and it's easy for us to make those arguments, it's easy for us to see the threat and say, this is a threat to public safety. It, I mean, it's here. Keep in mind that the way the public assistance folks from FEMA may view that versus the way we want to try to justify it may not always line up. So what we may consider an emergency may not be accepted as an emergency when FEMA comes to fill out all the paperwork.
And I guess the reason I bring it up, because there's two different issues there. There's one, if you want to declare it an emergency for reimbursement through FEMA. There's another, if FEMA doesn't consider it a reimbursement under FEMA, but for emergency purposes to avoid the delay of the bid process at the county level.
Yeah.
Is a different question, and that's why I bring that up.
That's what I was.
I've had that discussion with, obviously with the city a lot, and we're providing this information to all the municipalities, all the townships. Everyone needs the information so that they're doing the right thing. And what it comes down to is, is the declaration of emergency from the cities and from, from the county allows you to, I guess shortcut is a good word, it allows you to do contracting outside of our normal bid process. That's what that, you know, it's one of the things that that declaration that we already signed does for us. Let me be clear that, that what state law allows us to do in this situation with an emergency declared is actually much more than FEMA will allow us to do. So we can, we can do things outside of the normal bid process for expediency that will not qualify, just because we have it in our state law, just because we're allowed to do it, it will not meet the FEMA minimum standards. So in a nutshell, and again, there's so many, I mean, there's so many factors that I can't, it's hard to paint with a broad brush. But basically, the bottom line is, if we're doing something with a commercial entity, if it's not a municipal or a government asset, if we're doing something with a commercial entity that we are going to be seeking reimbursement for, it needs to be a competitive process with some type of scope of work or RFP with caps established that's flown publicly for three days, two to three days. So if we're going to do something with commercial work, commercial contractors, at this point, if we, if we want, if we want to seek reimbursement for that, there needs to be that competitive bid process, regardless of what state law allows us to do under our emergency declaration, if that, if that is clear in any way.
Any other questions, your colleagues?
Mr. Chair.
Just because we say it's an emergency doesn't mean FEMA agrees that it's emergency.
Yeah, I get that.
It came, it came up a little bit, a little bit ago, I can't remember just the conversation, but it says about fixing critters off the state highway and along the interstate and things like that. And I just thought, you know, I don't know how many is out there, but boy, the state could load up our burial site in a hurry if they just start hauling them in here everywhere. So I'm wondering if we should clarify, clarify that motion that said Pennington County in the story.
Now, while, while we were told, and more than once, by the rendering company, that they weren't interested in anything but intact carcasses, the state has contracted with the rendering company to, to handle that for them. So the, I think the, my understanding, and I'd hate to speak here and say something that's completely wrong and I'm not involved in that process, so to the best of my knowledge, the state is actually contracting with, with a company to dispose of those, so.
Well, I guess the thing that's bothered me about it is, if our carcasses aren't in one piece, how are the state carcasses going to be in one piece?
I think this, again, my understanding is I think the state is paying per carcass or some, I don't know that. I don't know if they're paying per carcass, but they are paying a company to dispose of the carcass. However they're disposing of the carcass, I don't know. However they're paying, I don't know. Whatever, I have, I'm not involved in that process in any way, shape or form, but my understanding is the state has contracted with somebody to take care of that problem for them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last, I guess, comment slash question is, I'm presuming that the emergency declaration that was made a couple of days ago would cover, and this was my primary purpose, for instance, if Mr. Jungi decided that to go through the general bid process would be too late in order to hire or contract outside county crews to remove some dangerous down timber in right of ways, he would be able to do that.
Absolutely.
Under the present declaration.
Absolutely.
Which would satisfy the Title V Emergency Procurement laws.
Absolutely.
Perfect. That's really what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I.
Going back to Commissioner Davis's question, I would think that if it came to the point that the state saw an advantage to using our pits, that we could negotiate a compensatory relationship with them.
If you catch him.
We will have people at, it's not just a, again, it's not just a come on, come all unmonitored. Again, we have to track what's ours and what's not ours in the pit so that, we will have some level of accountability at those pits. They're not just going to be open and left alone. We will have people there in a monitoring capacity.
Anything else? At this point, Holly and I talked yesterday about seeing if we could get some picture of the available money or potential available money. I imagine our auditor has worked something out on that.
Oh, I tried.
That's the best first step. I see a lot of red ink.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, this form should look quite familiar to it, to you all. This is the cash balances form that we use through the budgeting process. We used to just do it for general fund and I've expanded it to all funds. I haven't printed off all funds for you. There isn't an availability of cash in most of, other than the major funds that we have here, which if you turn to page, says two of eight, which is the second page. And the general fund, road and bridge, because we're dealing with so much right of way, which is where basically our expenses are going to majorly come, is removing the debris and the carcasses from the right of way of our county roads. Emergency disaster, of course, has been depleted somewhat from our mountain pine beetle projects. Emergency management is on there only to show you that that's where the money will, can come in and flow through. I'm not aware that they have any available cash at all, and that's why they show a zero balance. And of course, if you're into a loaning cap, a loaning of cash need, you can utilize accumulated building as long as it's going to be paid back in nine months. We have estimated the reserve at the end of December of 2014 at nineteen point three five, that's what we went through with budgeting. It's close to the twenty percent. We have one point, almost seven million in special reserves, which is the third page that you have in the general fund. Let me get the document I gave you. The third page, which tells you where those special reserves are in each of those funds. Though you cannot move money from accumulating building back to the fund from which it came, which some of the money has come from general fund, it is there again for loaning capabilities. But you can always, as a Board of Commissioners, when you assign a special reserve, you have the ability to reassign it. So that one point seven million dollars can be totally reassigned and not replenished for the needs for which it is assigned, if that is the Board's will to cover a disaster or at any time. If you wanted to just go in and say, we want to give one point seven million dollars to the libraries, you can do her. Accumulated building, just because you've assigned money for specific things, again, that can be reassigned, but again, it has to be for building purposes. The road and bridge money, they have actually a special reserve for future road projects. It's just an amount we keep in there to keep their cash balance below the twenty percent required by the Board. So that is very loosely for future projects. If you look at page, the number two of eight, under road and bridge, and when I talked to Heine yesterday, any money that you take out of his existing budget in 2013, his planned budget in 2014, or of course, any of his reserves that he is using, he will have to delete one of his projects if it is not replenished. Pretty plain and simple. He does not want to put forth any effort of his machinery or staff to do the removal of the debris, the trees and stuff in the right of way, nor the carcasses, because he said he's going to need those to repair the right of ways once those things are taken out, because the soil is so saturated, it's going to ruin our ditches. But he just wanted to know, it's not that the money isn't available from the county road and bridge fund, which is a totally safe use for that money. Without replenishing, it will affect his future projects, which I believe in the next couple of years are the overlay on, or the redo on Sharon Lake Road for I don't know how many miles, and the overlay on Deerfield Road. Those are his two most immediate projects. He actually has the four point nine million and is using up the one point four million that he'll end this year with, if he don't redo that. Emergency disaster, I've been in contact, that's been being used for mountain pine beetle. Been in contact with Scott Guffey. He doesn't believe he will need any more of that money for fiscal year 2013. So you basically, I did check with the Department of Revenue to see if we could levy, a special levy on an emergency basis for one year to replenish any emergency funds that we did use without having to go through the process of an opt-out, so we could just add it in for 2014 at this stage, and they said no. So if you wanted to do a one-time replenishing, you would have to go through the opt-out. And of course, even if we could have done it for an emergency, it would be over and above what we, over and above our levy. You did not use approximately one point three million of available taxing authority for the 2014 budget. That you could catch up with next year, or we could amend our budget. I haven't finalized levies yet, I haven't got, even got values from the state. So there are other counties that have not, have amended their budget after the September thirtieth deadline. So those are the available monies for you. Again, we will, we are still questioning when and if we will receive full reimbursement at their percentage from FEMA.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So if we took, if we change the levies to reflect what we didn't use, would, what's the time limit? Is that November first or that we would, is there a time limit, I guess I should say?
Well, I set the levy, so I, we don't run taxes till into the end of December, I can delay it that long. We're required to have all of our work done by the first of November. However. There's a lot of laws that nobody pays any attention to in levying, you know, we were supposed to have values in by first part of September. We're still waiting on four counties. We're still waiting on the state for school values. We're waiting on West River Water District for a levy request. So it's not a, does anybody follow the laws? Nope.
If the state can buy twenty dollar ham sandwiches and a can of Coke, I guess we can jockey around this stuff.
We have fifty dollar lunches, paper sack lunches.
Part of the problem is, I mean, you did a great job and it's nice to know it. Until you know how much it's going to cost, it really doesn't do much.
No, but just, just so you have it, that, that is the cash that is available, and of course, the reserve that we have at year end in all of our funds, especially general, carries our expenses through till we get first half of taxes in. So it's not like it's, oh, this big reserve out there that we're just hoping and planning that we're gonna, you know, have a party with and buy twenty-five dollar lunches, Ken.
At least we, at least we.
Everybody, yeah.
At least we would order them, not the governor.
Just so you have some idea, and, and Heine couldn't be here today, but, you know, he's more than willing to, to take the direction from the Board and, and use up his reserves. He, he knows that it's the right of ways that are causing the largest expense to Pennington County, and he's required to, to do and remove both the carcasses and, and the debris, but...
But there's consequences.
There's consequences, big ones.
In terms, first of all, thank you. But in terms of moving forward, we have no way to know exactly what amount of money's going to be needed.
No, nobody can tell me even a close estimate.
And in terms of doing the moving forward, is it realistic for us as we go along? And in terms of doing the moving forward, is it realistic for us as we go along to seek your guidance and others and possibly make more than one decision about where the money comes from and how much and that sort of thing?
Oh, most definitely. And we can even run into the negative, all it is is financial reporting at the end of the year. We know we have the cash if we run out of money to do loans. You know, I, we have 15, 16 million in available cash, which would leave us flat broke. So I think we can do, work with it. And what we'll do is the same thing we do with our capital projects, we wait till the last meeting in December, and we come forward and we say, here's what we think our expenses are to date, here's what they think we're gonna be for expenses incurred through the end of the year, and this is what we think the supplement's gonna be, and at that time, we'll be able to tell you where the cash is coming from.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm, not a problem. And I'm available anytime, and I'll
Thank you.
Be, be around, and I'm going down and telling them stuff down in E O C about your money. Thanks.
Jay, do you have anything that you would offer the Board at this time?
I don't.
Anyone else? Board members?
Highways, have anything outstanding there? Or you just gonna tell us to keep our hands off of highway money?
Well, like Julie said, it's there. It's, it's up to your discretion, but it is gonna affect future projects, you know. Heine saves that money, and he makes some major accomplishments with that.
Yes, he does.
But if it's needed now, it's needed now. That's a, that's gonna be your decision. We have been, I brought Bill Welk, our engineer, with me. He's been working on maps, getting our resource needs together for a competitive, competitive bid process for the tree removal. We had where there was a plan for the cattle removal or the livestock disposal. Right now, Heine's feeling was, our resources at Highway are committed to the maintenance of the roads. Our roads are in real bad shape after this storm, and especially, it sounds like we have more coming. There may be more tree removal, more flooding potential, so we were reluctant to commit resources for that. So it would be, our, in our, from our perspective, it would be good to have the contractors take care of the cattle, and it would be good if they can take care of the tree problem for us. So we're preparing for the competitive bid process, and we hope that's the way it goes. Money-wise, you're gonna take it where you need to take it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I really think that, and I know, I think we're planning like Dustin does for the worst thing that could possibly happen, but I think we can look at, look at a lot less than that. And I can't see possibly where we could not pay our bills and without robbing the bank. And so I think, as you said a little while ago, we go on down the line, see how things add up, then we make those decisions piecemeal as we have to, to put it all together.
From my perspective, I guess beyond what's been said, I am constantly amazed at the skill, dedication, intelligence of all of the people in this team. And probably no one individual knows entirely the effort that's been made, but it is commendable. Thank you.
Yep, you hit it right on the head. Make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.